All right, this is for the wireless community. How do I say that?
You're just saying, you know. And we have comments that we will do the...
Then we go to special presentations and I have to get down there. It looks pretty easy, it's just the construction. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll get started if we may. My name's Al Adam. Mayor Fox is going to be delayed tonight, so I'll get the meeting started. Can I ask for the Pledge of Allegiance? Just, um, am I going to do something with that? Young ladies here this evening from the Caneo Lost Virginous Futures Foundation. Your name is?
My name's Anna Lindberg. Agugas.
And we're going to say the pledge together. So if you face the flag, which is right over here, put your hands over your hearts and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm back. So, we do have the roll call next, if you wouldn't mind. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Irwin.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam.
Here.
And Mayor Fox is absent at this time.
Thank you. As far as requests for continuances of a public hearing or agenda item, we do have two this evening. The first has to do with a wireless communications facility on Peak Place in Lang Ranch. The applicant has withdrawn the appeal, so I'd like to get a motion to receive that withdrawal and cancel the hearing. Mr. Price?
Shall I move?
Thank you. Vote, please. Vote, please.
I'm sorry, could you vote again, please? The motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Fox absent.
All right, thank you. And we have a second item here as far as the water conservation program, which was to be a department report. And we need a motion to cancel that hearing as well. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Yes, I'll move, but it's my understanding that it will come back.
As a department report.
Yeah, oh, I see, yeah. Scheduled as a department report, that's correct. All right, vote on that, please.
The maker of the motion was?
Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. And now we'll go to our special presentations. And here we are. I'd like to turn on the mic. There we go. I'd like to ask Pat Graham if she would mind coming up, please. Pat's a trustee for the Caneo Lost Virginous Futures Foundation. And each year, the foundation has a youth leadership program. It provides local students the opportunity to experience and understand the value of becoming active in their communities. And Pat, would you like to tell us a little bit more about that program?
I will. And I'm going to have the students tell you a little bit about the program, but I'll make some introductory remarks. I would like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Adam, the city council, and city staff. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the Caneo Lost Virginous Future Foundation with two of our students who participated in the 2013-14 Youth Leadership Program. The Future Foundation has a long history in Thousand Oaks, going back to 1972 under the leadership of Dr. Raymond Olson from CLU and other community leaders with the goal of serving as a catalyst and facilitator for studies, projects, and events that would focus on the quality of life and plan for the future, making our area a better place to live. As an example, this building that we're in right now is a direct result of studies done by the foundation. Our studies and input also led to the building of the Global Center, the Teen Center, Community Consciousness Under One Roof, Senior Living, and School Unification, to name just a few. These ideas had their beginning in the Future Foundation. Our most recent undertaking, a study involving community members that foresaw a need for a permanent world-class art museum, resulted in the formation of the California Museum of Art, Thousand Oaks. And that board is hard at work raising the funds necessary to build, to make that building a reality. The Future Foundation is extremely grateful for the support that has been given by the city council throughout the years. And we believe that together we have made a difference. One of our biggest projects over the years is working with young people. And the two students with me tonight will outline what that was all about for this year.
Anna?
Hi, everyone. My name's Anna Lindberg. I attended Newberry Park High School. I just graduated. And this was my first year in the Youth Congress Leadership Program. The Youth Congress Leadership Program, sponsored by the Caneo Lost Virginous Futures Foundation, is in its fifth year. It replaced the Youth Congress, which ran for 25 years. The Youth Leadership Program was created to help students explore the inner workings of their community and encourage them to both actively participate and be of service to it. Through innovative and highly informative programs, students develop an understanding of the community as well as valuable leadership skills. This year, the 75 participants had the opportunity to visit various places in the region to find out how they each contribute to our communities. Students in grades 9 to 12 participated and included those from Agora, Calabasas, Lorena, Oak Park, Newberry Park, Thousand Oaks, Viewpoint, and Westlake High Schools. Returning participants were given the opportunity to hold leadership positions in the program. We kicked off the year with an orientation meeting at University Center, where Superintendent Dr. Jeff Barstad talked about the importance of community in the components of being a good leader. At our next meeting, which focused on education, Dr. Barstad and Dr. Betsy Connolly told us about their experiences in education and how the system works. Our next meeting about arts and culture in the community was held here at the Civic Arts Plaza. We first toured the Sher Form Theater, which we learned is also used for city council meetings. We then toured the Cavalry Theater, where we learned about the typical backstage routine during shows, stage directions, prop setup, and lights and backdrop control. This was followed up by a visit to Lost Robles Medical Center, where we were taught how to perform CPR and how the hospital prioritizes patients in the emergency room. We were also told about new and upcoming surgery techniques. Hi, I'm Anna Agugas, and I will be a junior at Thousand Oaks High School next year. And this is my second year of the Future Foundation. Next, we visited Fire Station 89 in Agora Hills and learned about the firefighters' emergency responses to distress calls. We were privileged to become familiar with the multimillion-dollar, awesome-equipped fire trucks, and some students put on heavy suits that firefighters wear and touched the Jaws of Life equipment. That day, we felt like heroes. Our next meeting was quite a memorable one at the BMW Design Works Studios in Newberry Park. We were impressed by not only the talent of the industrial engineers there, but also by their countless inventions and contributions to the community. Next, we met at Calabasas City Hall, where we learned about the justice system. Mayor David Shapiro and Councilmember James Bozagian, who are both attorneys, gave presentations on civil and criminal law. We found the topic fascinating and enlightening. The following meeting took place at the city of Westlake Village, where we were fortunate enough to have presentations by city officials, including city manager Ray Taylor and Mayor Mark Rutherford, who provided key insight into how a city is managed and governed. We were also given a tour of City Hall and the library, as well as an exciting preview of the new Westlake Plaza with our favorite stores like Target and In-N-Out. Our next meeting was the Agora Hills Animal Shelter, where we introduced to the animal adoption process, and we were able to interact with dogs and cats looking for a new home. It was a heartwarming experience and a lot of fun. Each meeting was an entirely different experience. The speakers gave us excellent information about how they worked within the community to bring about results and make our communities a great place to live. We were all enlightened from these presentations and received wonderful opportunities to volunteer and actively participate. We concluded the program with a meeting at the Oak Canyon Community Park, where the Kiwanis Club of Thousand Oaks prepared a delicious barbecue dinner that we enjoyed with our families. We would like to thank all of the very important community leaders who took the time to meet with us. They all helped to make this year's program a great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. It sounds like a very well-rounded program. And I appreciate you both stepping up to become future leaders of Thousand Oaks. Thank you. We also have Marissa Campos with us this evening. She's going to give us a little update on the 101-23 progress. Marissa?
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem Adam and members of the council. Thanks again for having me tonight. Just to give you a quick overview of the construction activity that's going to be taking place over the next two weeks, front and center is going to be construction activity on the retaining walls along the 101 freeway. Over the next two weeks, there will be intermittent nighttime closures on the northbound 101 between Hampshire Road and the 23 interchange to facilitate this work. The contractor will be taking nighttime closures as well on the Hampshire and Moore Park Road on-ramps to the northbound 101. And like I said, that is all related to construction of the retaining walls in those areas. We also anticipate daytime construction activity at Caneo School Road next Monday, June 30. There will be flagmen on-site during the day next Monday. As a lane may be reduced at Caneo School Road, the public will still have through access, but there may be just a flagman there to help direct traffic. Detailed closure information will be available on the website as soon as the schedule for these intermittent closures is finalized. So I would suggest the public check the website later this week for the latest information. For the Fourth of July holiday, there will be no closures on the project from Thursday, July 3 through Sunday, July 6. So that's just a note for the public. If you're going to be traveling for the holiday weekend, you shouldn't run into any closures. And then after the holiday, pile driving will be starting up at the different bridges at Hampshire and Moore Park Road. We don't have the schedules yet for that activity, but as soon as we do, it will be posted on the project website, as well as the Google map. And we will also be sending out an e-blast to notify the public of that work. And pile driving, just for reference, is how the contractor prepares the foundation for these bridges. So, just some information there. In order to respond to also the increased accident rates in the project area and to improve operations within the project limits, I'm really happy to report that the project team, after meeting with Caltrans and local law enforcement, will be reducing the speed limit on the freeway within the project area to 55 miles per hour. So we do expect that that will help a lot with just getting folks to slow down a little bit and get the number of accidents down. So signage to notify the public of the reduced speed limit will be placed in the project area, and that will all be up before the July 4 holiday. So look for that in the next few days here. Caltrans is also exploring installing signs with flashing beacons on the northbound 101 before the 23 interchange. In addition, on the southbound 23 at the 101 merge point. So, we're looking at every option that we can to help get the public's attention and really encourage folks to drive carefully through the project area. So, those are some things that we can look forward to. Another change that the project team will be implementing in order to ease traffic operations in the area, by the end of the week, the contractor will open the closed left-turn lane on the northbound 101 Hampshire off-ramp. And that will provide one left-turn lane, one shared through and right-turn lane, and then one dedicated right-turn lane. So, that's just another operational improvement that we expect will mitigate some of the congestion and other issues that we've been seeing in the project area. So, happy to report that we've got some progress being made, and we hope some improvements that will really help the public in the next coming weeks. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Marissa. Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
I have to pipe up again, simply because I use Hampshire-Westlake-101-23 numerous times a day.
Yes.
And the 23 to, south to the 101-south Hampshire off-ramp has been a major problem in the last week. There have been several accidents once again, and traffic has backed up all the way to the 23. And that has been ever since the K rails were put in and we're down to one lane. I know you mentioned briefly about the Hampshire off-ramp, but when will that go back to at least two lanes?
At this point, I don't have the exact date. It will be at least until some of the construction has progressed at the bridge at that point. The reason being, underneath the bridge, once you get off the freeway, the contractors obviously had to reduce some of that space so that they have a safe working area. But I will be happy to provide a more in-depth update at the next presentation that I make.
Okay, that would be July 8. Yeah, that's, these are the K rails.
Yes.
Where a sound wall is supposed to go in. And there hasn't been any construction in over a month. And traffic is backed up, and there are nothing but complaints. So if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other question? Pick one, if I may. Are we on schedule?
So far, we are just a couple months into the project. Aside from working out some of the kinks that are common at the beginning of projects, things look to be moving ahead smoothly. The contractor's security paving that we're working with is well-known for, you know, they like to get out there and get the work done as quickly as they can. So, we're confident that after we make some of these operational improvements within the project area, things will be progressing a lot smoother. And we don't anticipate any major delays at this point.
All right, thank you, Marissa.
Thank you very much.
All right, and with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would call for the public comments, please.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Five people have presented cards in pursuit to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And our first speaker will be Ed Ambroses. Good evening, Mr. Ambroses.
Good evening. My name is Ed Ambroses, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. And thank you for your time. I'm here asking you to please do something as soon as you can regarding the control and regulation of drones in this city. Everything within this city's boundaries, any other properties like COSPA that you might have, that you manage or control. The first time that I recently had read anything about drones and their impacts to society was the story about the city or county in Colorado that tried to legislate giving citizens the approval to shoot drones down out of the sky. And I thought, boy, that's pretty extreme. And then I read recently, the LA Kings were celebrating their Stanley Cup championship. And there was this drone, and the celebrants there quickly knocked it down and destroyed the thing because they were so irritated with its presence. And I started thinking about this, and I said, I don't know how it could ever impact me. And here we are, just last week, right after Father's Day. I hear this noise, and I know what it is immediately. And I step outside. I heard it in the house. And I go directly to the direction that the sound came from. And sure enough, there's this drone, just a couple hundred yards from my house, just hanging up there, and I'm sure, you know, scanning the neighborhood with its camera. And for the first time, I finally understood what the first two incidents meant. And at that moment, I really wish that I could lawfully go out and shoot that thing down with a double-barrel 10-gauge shotgun. I felt so, like my privacy was so invaded. And if you saw the little story on 60 Minutes with the US Senator Feinstein, who just recounted this. She was just sitting in an office building, and she looked through a window, and there was this drone just staring right back at her. And it flew off. And there are numerous other incidents like this that I'd be happy to recount at other times. But remote-control airplanes, you know, the hobby of flying remote-control airplanes has been very highly regulated in this city, and it's become impossible for these hobbyists to even fly in restricted areas. And something really needs to be done to bring these drones under full control. I feel like my privacy is invaded. If you're not concerned about that, consider possible uses like perverts and voyeurs can look through, you know, into your property. It could be used by criminals to case out homes before they're robbed. There's numerous ways that it could be used adversely, and I think you really all need to seriously consider looking into this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ambroses. Next, we have Eric Berg. Good evening, Mr. Berg.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Eric Berg. I'm the manager of resources with the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. And joining me this evening are a couple of members of Cuyahoga's Board of Directors, sitting behind me, who will intend to make brief comments as well tonight and introduce themselves at that time. For half a century, Cuyahoga's played a large role, as you know, in securing much of the water that is used within the county for urban needs. The Caneo and Simi Valley, valleys in particular, are highly dependent upon our supplies, virtually 100% dependent. We're here tonight to address an issue that we consider to be among Cuyahoga's highest priorities, that is, to support a true solution to the water resource issues in the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. The source of imported water for over 25 million residents in the state, two-thirds of the state, and including 130,000 folks right here in your own city. However, day by day, year by year, the Delta's ecosystem continues to crash along with water supply reliability. But there is hope. In December of last year, the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, or BDCP, as it's known as, and associated environmental documents were released for public review. That public review period will conclude July 29. The documents were released with full support by the governor and the federal administration, along with the governor's Assistant Resources Secretary, Jerry Merrill, a highly respected individual who recently retired. But prior to his service, he was, as Assistant Secretary, he was the executive director of the Planning and Conservation League for 20 years here in the state. So in my view, that's very telling. He is hardly a proponent of what some may consider extreme-right-leaning ideologies, perspectives, that is, big water projects. He gets it. He understands the realities. He sees the promise and the value of the BDCP. Rest assured, there are plenty of gatekeepers for the Delta with a keen eye on the activities up in that region. The EPA, Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries Service, Department of Fish and Wildlife, State Water Resource Control Board, Delta Stewardship Council. I could go on and on for 15 minutes. The list goes on. The objectives of the BDCP are twofold. To restore the fragile ecosystem, protect sensitive species throughout, through restoration of 100,000 acre-feets of habitat, and also to construct new conveyance facilities to finally complete the state water project. In mid-May, Cuyahoga's prepared a draft coalition letter supporting the proposed BDCP. The letter was distributed to our member purveyors and other area water interests for consideration. To date, the entities that have agreed to sign include the cities of Simi Valley, Oxnard, Port Juaniemi, the Greater Caneo, Simi Valley, Camarillo, and Oxnard, Chambers of Commerce, Vasita, AWA, Association of Water Agencies of Ventura County, and the United Water Conservation District. We're also reaching out to the Camarillo Council tomorrow night, the Board of Supervisors, and the city of Moore Park in July. And a week or so ago, the governor reached out to some of the larger water agencies in Southern California asking for input, impact, or input feedback on what has been done to garner support for the program. We are asking for support from the city. And in closing, we would greatly appreciate that. The water users within the region need your support. And we realize that you have a legislative platform that perhaps this might fit within. If not, we would appreciate serious consideration of a potential agendized item at a future time, perhaps the next meeting, if that's possible, given our time constraints with respect to this letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Our next speaker is Tom Slosson, followed by Jeff Quatie.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and council members. My name's Tom Slosson. I am a resident of Simi Valley. I'm also right now the vice president of the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District Board and also vice president of the AWA VC, which is Association of Water Agencies of Ventura County, and also an engineering geologist. Right now, we do need to really consider going forward and supporting this Bay Delta Conservation Plan as best we can. We're looking at all sorts of conditions, which are really somewhat dire right now. I don't know if you know about Castaic Reservoir, which is one of the main sources for the water. For here in Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley, it's down to like 50% right now. Pyramid is down to, or it's at 90%, but that's more of an emergency reserve. The water is getting low. The groundwater, because the water is low, a lot of the farmers are using the groundwater too. And we need to have a source, a reliable source of water to come into this area, imported water. And that would be by doing the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. It's needed to make sure that we have water for life quality, for firefighting capabilities, for businesses to have water to be able to do things, and also to grow the crops that we have here in Ventura County. So, as Eric had said, we would like your support. We have all sorts of other agencies and cities and communities which have supported this, including the AWA. Again, we got their support based on it, and that was unanimous with all the different folks on that, which are purveyors, users, as in the agricultural folks, and the rest of them. So, we ask that you support the coalition letter if you get a chance, and please sign onto it for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Scott Quatie, followed by Mr. Nick Kidway.
Good evening, members of the council. I am Scott Quatie, president of Cuyahoga's Board of Directors and a representative on the board, on that board, for the citizens of the Caneo Valley. I'd like to provide my perspective as the representative that the Bay Delta Conservation, or BDCP, associated tunnels beneath the Delta offer the least-cost solution to the lack of reliability of imported water supplies. Without the BDCP, we have two possible futures: threats to water supply reliability and even more expensive water supplies. Water supply reliability will worsen due to regulatory cutbacks combined with droughts, such as what we're currently experiencing. And when the next large earthquake hits Northern California, this area... And when the next large earthquake hits Northern California, this area will have little or no water for up to six years. Or the more expensive water supplies will need to be developed to regain the reliability we’ve had in the past. The only supply which provides equivalent quantities of water is ocean desalinization. That will double the rates. Stormwater and recycled water are nice supplements to imported supplies, but they don’t generate the quantity of supply our area basically historically needs. Recycled water, keep in mind, is a follow-up on imported water. Also, the BDCP will improve the ecosystem of the Delta. Although the water which comes to Southern California from the Delta represents only 4 percent of the total flow of water from the Delta, it is diverted at a location which changes natural flow patterns and harms salmon and smelt. The BDCP will reroute the point of diversion to maintain natural flow patterns over the larger Delta area and will also restore 150,000 acres of land toward the healthy estuary it was a century and a half ago. Thousand Oaks relies on imported water for about 99 percent of its needs. The BDCP is the best chance to improve our area’s water supply reliability at a reasonable cost, estimated about $10 per month per household. We thank you for your consideration and respectfully request that the City of Thousand Oaks support Governor Brown and speak up for reliable water at an affordable price by signing on to Ventura County Coalition Letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quatie. And next, Mr. Nick Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway. Last time I checked, still Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor Protem. Council government is supposed to, is known for dotting the i’s and crossing the t’s. Yet MPT, Al Adam, is sitting behind a foxy mayor’s nameplate. Takes just five seconds, and I was amazed when the, these used to be changed on election night, and they should be done over here. Everybody doesn’t know who’s sitting there. That’s why I completely oppose the electronic voting, because people need to know, and people don’t, are not like me, that they know every council member. Lately, going to Ontario for business and seeing the huge ugly signs for auto dealers, malls, even with the nice public announcements like for L.A. Philharmonic, or even the Duatri City Council, I don’t know the time, but it’s just, there’s a tagline on one of the signs. They’re supposed to make you feel good. But I feel good that we defeated the ugly auto mall sign despite Mayor Irwin’s full steam approach for approval. We need a pledge from the council that it will not come back to haunt us. Since 98, we’ve had an un-American political sign ordinance that remains as is, and it is an incumbent protection ordinance for name ID and nothing else. And every council member violates it, even though you do not need to, because you already have name ID. We have a 12-foot maximum restriction per sign, and it applies to all the candidates, even Assembly and Congress. And almost all the candidates in the past have kept up to it, except this year, the memo did not get to the good pastor. If I can see the pastor’s sign, T.O.T.V., there it is. This sign, my scale, was at the Bendy exit, southbound, and I took my scale to measure it, and a woman from the furniture store promptly came out and thought I was a vandalizer or something like that. And when I got into the car, she promptly took two or three pictures of me. So, it’s, I mean, and then I was, this was the third day, I was going to complain to the city. City had the great four-day weekend. So, I didn’t get around to it for almost a week, so the good pastor enjoyed the sign there for almost the entire time. And then after the election, I saw that another, that sign was taken off, but another vagrant sign was, was on the 101, southbound before Moore Park, and that remained even after the election. One of the completely un-American part of this ordinance is that you cannot have two signs closer to 100 feet apart. And that is, T.O.T.V., that is the ARCO station on Borchard and Michael Road. Both Ms. Jackie and Raphael and McCoy were violating that. It’s just really ridiculous to have these kind of horrible ordinances. Will anyone on the council have the courage and do just simply the right thing and bring it at the next council meeting and change it?
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Just let the record show that Mayor Fox is back at the meeting. And thank you, Mr. Adam. Appreciate you pitching there. That concludes the public comments. Item 7 is consent calendar. Any items? All follow-up for the city manager. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we heard from a few speakers. One had comments about looking into the use of drones and for the public’s information, the city, we’re not alone in this issue. We are aware and we’re, we will take a look at that, and we’re working with other agencies to have a better understanding of what cities can and can’t do with respect to that issue, but we are aware of it. The three speakers from the Cuyahoga District about the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, staff is taking a look at that. We’re working in tandem with the other cities in the county, and possibly will come back to council with a recommendation on that. And then the final speaker had some comments about political signees from the last council, or, excuse me, the last general, last election. And there are a number of complaints, and we are looking into those. And we will work, council, with the candidates in the upcoming November election to avoid some of the challenges that we’ve had in terms of complying with the city’s signed issues, or signed ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Now, we move to item 7, consent calendar. Any items council would like to call special? All right, hearing none, how about a motion for the consent calendar? Mr. Price.
I would move approval of the entire consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Price moves for item 7, discussion. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Move to item 8, 8A is the annual report. That’s committee commission and board reports. And Jerry Miller is going to be here to present that report. Go ahead. Jerry, good evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, welcome. Mr. Mayor Protem, Adam led the meeting till now. Members of the city council, as the Chair of the Cultural Affairs Commission, it is my pleasure to provide you with a brief overview of the commission’s activities for the last 12 months. First off, I want to note, though, that three other members of the commission are here with us tonight. Appreciate if they would raise their hands when I call their name. Bob Berry, who is well-known in these circles. Bob also serves as Chair of the foundation closely related to the Cultural Affairs Commission. Ted Lowe, a member of the commission. And David Mead. David chairs our CEEF Grants Committee. First, allow me to provide a little background on the commission. The Cultural Affairs Commission was established in 2010 to serve as an advisory body to city council on matters pertaining to the arts and cultural development in the city with priority focus on the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza’s Fred Cavley Theater and Janet and Ray Share Forum Theater. The commission is composed of 12, of 11 commissioners approved by city council, with eight members appointed and nominated by city council’s Cultural Arts Review Committee, two members nominated by the Alliance for the Arts, and one member nominated by the Friends of the Civic Arts Plaza. The commission is a working commission, and as such fulfills its assigned responsibilities through a structure of standing subcommittees and special ad hoc subcommittees. Each commissioner serves on at least two working subcommittees. This evening, I would like to highlight some of the activities and projects of the Cultural Affairs Commission and the subcommittees over this past fiscal year. The Grants Committee has administrative oversight of the city’s community events and endowment fund, the grant program, and the City of Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Theater Performance Credits Grants. $100,000 in CEEF grants are awarded annually for artistic, cultural, and educational events that promote the city. The city and the Alliance for the Arts jointly fund $90,000 annually, in addition, in Theater Performance Credits Grants, which are provided to local nonprofit arts organizations that perform in the two theaters mentioned earlier. This year, the Grants Committee reviewed 44 grant applications with requests totaling A total of 36 CEEF grants and 16 Theater Performance Credit Grants were approved by the city council in September 2013. The Residency Committee. The Residency Committee provides oversight of resident arts organizations and administers official city cultural events programs. In July 2013, at this very meeting earlier, city council approved the commission’s recommendation to designate the Thousand Oaks Arts Festival as an official city cultural event for the fiscal year 2013-2014. As you know, there are three other resident programs that the city supports, namely the New West Symphony, the Cabrillo Music Theater, and the Pacific Festival Ballet. The Theater Operations Committee. The Theater Operations Committee provides advisory oversight of the operations of the theaters. The committee has worked closely with staff to develop plans for the Civic Arts Plaza’s 20th Anniversary Celebration, which will take place in October. The full schedule of events will be announced to all in September. The committee also has started to lay the groundwork for the development of a formal strategic plan for the theaters going forward. The Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation is a nonprofit that has responsibility for presenting programming at the theaters and running the concessions operations. In fiscal year 2013-2014, the foundation presented 28 engagements consisting of a total of 37 performances. Artists included America, Clint Black, Chris Isaac, the Glenn Miller Orchestra, Cesar Milan, Wilson Phillips, and The Temptations. In January 2014, the foundation also reorganized the concessions operation to streamline staffing and increase profitability, and that new arrangement seems to be working well. The Visual Arts Committee is responsible for curating exhibitions in the Fred Cavley Theater Art Gallery, in addition to managing the operation of the Community Art Gallery. The committee presented two exhibitions this year. First, The Visions of Caneo took place last fall and featured the work of 24 artists highlighting the Caneo Valley. Secondly, Expressions Time 3 is the current exhibition and features celebrated artists Klar Mesko, Kristy Botkin, Reeves, and Jay Smithline. The Arts Education Committee was formed to coordinate efforts to attract and promote arts education programs at the theaters. The committee lent its support to the Alliance for the Arts in its efforts to bring the Kennedy Center’s Any Given Child program to Thousand Oaks. Although the Alliance did not receive this Kennedy Center grant, the groundwork has been laid to solicit funding for a similar program from other foundations. And just to be in competition there was a feather in our cap in itself. I would like to note that in March, the Civic Arts Plaza welcomed the 1,000,000th student to an arts education school performance. I’d like to underline that, in March, we welcomed the 1,000,000th student to programs here in our theaters. The Regional Cultural Events Committee is one of the commission’s new committees and is charged with encouraging community-wide marketing efforts to support regional arts festivals and other large cultural events. Committee is currently developing a work plan for the future activities. The Web Site Committee was established to work closely with staff on developing a separate freestanding website for the theaters. Our hope is that this will expand our outreach and visibility. The design and development of the new website is currently underway, with a public launch of the site scheduled for September, just in time for the beginning of the 20th Anniversary Season of Programming. On May 10th, just a little over a month ago, the commission held a goal-setting session to establish a long-term vision for the future activities of this commission. The Cultural Affairs Commission was initially tasked with implementing the Cultural Affairs Review Plan, which have now largely been completed. Those recommendations are in place. During the retreat, commissioners identified key areas of focus for the commission, which have been assigned to a new proposed structure of the following three standing committees. And these are, under the new plan, the Theater Operations Committee, which will have the responsibility for the following areas: financial sustainability of the theaters fund, audience development, marketing, programming, not including that programming under the TOCAP Foundation responsibilities, and the resident arts organizations. And arts education school programs, and most importantly, the development of a strategic plan for the theaters going forward. Underscoring that, most importantly, we want to develop a strategic plan in fuller frame for the theaters going forward. The second new committee under the new arrangement will be the Community Outreach Committee, which will operate with responsibility for the following areas: arts advocacy across the board, visual and public art, designation of official city cultural events, community grant programs such as the CEEF grants, promoting collaboration among arts organizations, working with the Caneo Valley Tourism Improvement District on Cultural Tourism, and development of a cultural master plan for Thousand Oaks, which has been desired for some years. And the third and standing committee of this new structure will be the continuation of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation. The TOCAP Foundation will operate with responsibility in the following areas: oversight of CAP Presents Programming presented by the foundation. And I want to underline, this is kind of new designation for programming coming out of the foundation. CAP, standing for Civic Arts Plaza, presents whatever the program, the event, the musical might be. So, oversight of these, this new program under that designation. Theater concessions operations will be a part of this responsibility. Marketing of foundation programming, ensuring the financial sustainability of foundation programming, and applying for capital, operational, and program grants for the support of the theaters and the commission. Under this new structure of subcommittees, the majority of commissioners will now serve on one committee, on just one committee that matches their interests best. A slight change, or proposed modification in meeting schedule for the commission is as follows: in order to make the commission meetings more productive, several changes to the schedule and format of the meetings have also been proposed. The commission would meet bi-monthly rather than monthly in order to allow more work to be completed through the subcommittees. Secondly, the number of general reports at each meeting will be reduced to one liaison report and one report from a report and one report from a resident arts organization. The reports will be scheduled on a rotating basis among all the liaison and resident arts organizations, of which we have about ten that tend to show up one time or another over a given quarter. The functions and duties proposed in the new arrangement would be as follows. Contained in the Cultural Affairs Commission Resolutions and Recommendations that were duly developed -- let me start over. Finally, the Commission reviewed the list of functions and duties contained in the CAC Resolution and recommends that the duty of developing a volunteer recognition program be removed. That's been an assignment that's been in place since the Cultural Arts Review was done about three or four years ago, and the suggestion is that this is not a responsibility limited to the Cultural Affairs Commission. Therefore, the suggestion that this be removed is one of our responsibilities and cared for in another way. The Commission felt that this requirement was rather broad, and the Friends of Civic Arts Plaza already works closely with staff to create appropriate opportunities to recognize the theater volunteers, both within their own ranks and recognized by you folks as well. The recommendations then are as follows: on behalf of the Cultural Affairs Commission, I ask that you first receive the annual report from the Cultural Affairs Commission for 2013-2014, and secondly, adopt the resolution revising the Cultural Affairs Commission's schedule of meetings, function and duties, and standing subcommittees. I would like to end this presentation this evening with a special programming announcement, however, by our esteemed Director Barry McComb, Cultural Affairs Director. Barry?
Thank you. When we announced our season a couple of council meetings back, we noted that we would be continuing to add programs throughout the year and encouraged listeners and our patrons to visit our website on a regular basis as well as sign up for our newsletter. So I'm actually here tonight to announce one of those recent additions. Earlier today, we announced that Kobe Calle will be joining us in September, on September 26th. Of course, Kobe is probably our most famous homegrown talent. This is actually part of just a three-week tour that she'll be doing, and once again, I'm very pleased to announce that Kobe will be playing Thousand Oaks but not Los Angeles. So if people in the Los Angeles area want to see her, they'll have to travel out here to Thousand Oaks. And then just as a reminder, next week on Thursday night, Kenny Loggins will be here kicking off our new twentieth anniversary season. Well, he's selling very well, there still are a few tickets available, and we encourage you to come and join us on the kickoff night.
Thank you very much. That's good news indeed. Members of the Council, we thank you for this evening, your time, your attention to this report. Barry and I are available to answer any questions that you might have in this connection. Thank you very much.
Dr. Miller, we appreciate your report. Questions for either Dr. Miller or Mr. McComb. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, and thank you, Jerry, for the work you do. It's a very important Commission. I'm glad to see that you're in charge. I do have a question. This is probably for Barry, for Mr. McComb. One of the functions of your Commission is to oversee the grants from the Community Events Endowment Fund. And I know we've made a number of grants fairly recently. Is there a balance left in that fund as we speak?
Actually, those grants are distributed on a yearly basis. There's a hundred thousand dollars that's available to be distributed each year. The initial recommendations, which are brought in front of council for approval, account for eighty-five thousand dollars of that amount. Then we hold fifteen thousand dollars back, which are available throughout the year for any emergency requests that might arise. So we are at the end of the current fiscal year. We'll be starting with a new balance of a hundred thousand dollars as of July 1st, and we'll be bringing the initial proposed recommendations to you in September for approval.
All right. So as of now, we have fifteen thousand in there?
For the next week, I believe there's probably about five thousand dollars left. We did make a couple of emergency grants during the course of the year.
Five thousand left, okay. And in the cycle, how much did we, if you recall, how much did we give to Cabrillo Music Theater?
I'd have to go back. I think the number that I remember is around fourteen thousand dollars.
About fourteen?
Yeah. Out of that fund, in addition to funding through other sources throughout the year as well.
Of course, Cabrillo Music Theater is one of our resident presenters, and I think they've been presenting here for probably twenty years since the theater started, and they've been a resident organization for the last ten or fifteen. And through that budgetary process that Mayor Fox and I participated in, Cabrillo has agreed to pay the full resident fee amount and cut back a little bit on their performances in the big theaters so we could do some programming there, which I thought was very cooperative. But as most of us know, they're in a fundraising mode right now that could affect their future viability. And I would like the Council to perhaps entertain the notion here that with the five thousand that we have left in there, that we, and I guess you'd call it an off-cycle grant, I presume, because we're off-cycle on this, that that five thousand be in fact granted to Cabrillo Music Theater to hopefully ensure their viability, and just as a gesture of goodwill from the Council to help support one of our resident organizations. Now, I don't know if we can decide this tonight, which I'm getting a nod that we cannot. Okay, I got it, that's fine. So, because it hasn't been agendized, which is the problem there. However, I would ask that it be agendized for the next meeting, which would be July 8th, and then we can discuss it then. And I would just say that, you know, this is an organization that could use a little help right now, and I think we're in the position to give it, but we'll talk about that on July 8th.
Mayor Protem, if I might add, we'll obviously be going into the next grant cycle as of July 1st. Cabrillo has made a grant request that will be brought to you the 1st of September as part of that grant cycle.
Well, okay, I understand. However, I think they're facing an August 1st deadline for their fundraising, and well, they have to raise two hundred thousand, and of course, one of the strings attached to any grant to them, it would be returned if the two hundred thousand is not reached. But I don't know if we can wait till September in what I'm speaking about.
It's a yellow card. In spirit of World Cup, it's a yellow card. Can't talk about that.
Okay, but anyway, right. Like Mayor Fox said, this is something we can discuss on the July 8th meeting. Thank you for your corralling me in there.
No problem. Don't make me, I don't have a red card, so.
Yellow card, I like that.
Thank you, Mr. Adam, for both of those references. I would like to respond, one, appreciation for Cabrillo Musical Theater, what it has brought over these last twenty years. Their presentations, and Margaret and I have been present from year one, have been superb, comparable to visiting national touring companies in every respect. And our Commission has worked hand in hand, as has this council, to support Cabrillo Music Theater, and I for one hope that it can be receiving the kind of strong support that you're referencing going forward. On the CEEF grants, it's my understanding that if there is any money remaining at the end of a given year, that's not carried over. It's a beginning altogether of a new year. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all we have by way of report. We thank you again.
Other questions for Dr. Miller or Mr. McComb that are within the scope of tonight's agenda? All right. Dr. Miller, just a couple of things. One, I know the council would agree, I wish Dennis Gillette was here, because Dennis and I were on the original committee, now it's Mr. Adam and I. I have to tell you that the Cultural Affairs Commission is working precisely the way it was envisioned. And it's not always, that's not always how it works out. Sometimes you have to work through things, and the work that your Commission is doing under the leadership of Mr. McComb, I would say is exactly what we envisioned with respect to your work product and the good work that you're doing in making it a coherent plan as it relates to the arts, all the arts. And I just want to thank you and your committee members, your Commission members. You're doing a lot of work. That's the other thing, as I wanted to note, is your work product is, my sense is, there's plenty for the Commission to do. That was one of the things that we were discussing back when this was envisioned, was would there be enough work to be done? And so my question to you is, and this is somewhat rhetorical, is I get the sense you have plenty of work to do.
We believe there is ample work to be done. We're striving to meet that challenge, and the stock market is looking up overall. We believe the finances will look up as well, we hope. Thank you.
The other thing is, one of the recommendations that you made was the reassignment of the volunteer recognition program. Just to be clear, you were not recommending that that doesn't occur. If I heard you correctly, you're saying that that's really out of the scope of this particular Commission and is better served in another area of city government.
That is correct. We believe that the volunteer recognition indeed has merit. We're just not sure that the Cultural Affairs Commission is the best commission to have the overall overview of this responsibility.
All right, very good. All right, the recommendation, do we have one speaker card on this?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Fox. How are you doing?
Fantastic. Thanks for asking.
It's about time to declare victory on the chaotic promise to taxpayers that no taxpayer dollars would be used to run the theaters, which was billed against the wishes of many residents, and not committee, subcommittee theaters to their debt. After listening to the comments, that's what I say. I do want to thank Dr. Miller and the Committee for their selfless service. Since the former City Finance Director is a member of the Commission and present, I commend him for the miraculous juggling act he did to build the blob with two theaters and one copper curtain, which incidentally has left us with a $200 million debt, this is fact, which is about $6,000 per family of two and a half. You don't ask me where I come with half a person. It's reality also. Since this is here and we pay for it, and we keep paying for it, it does not belong to any committee, it does not belong to any council member, nor the council as a whole. We need to declare victory, it's about time, declare victory and be honest, and come up with an endowment for the theaters in the range of $2 million, and use that money to subsidize the theaters openly and have a red line that it will not be crossed and allow community groups. We should welcome non-city residents to the Committee and different committees now. We need to have a greater outreach and really make this a regional arts center, and reach out and have a committee of elected folks from the nine other cities as well as major business leaders. We may not get nine, but get five, but that's the direction we should go. The raising of the Mickey Mouse fees and treating the dollars like it's my granddaughter's money, I didn't bring the hundred-dollar bills, but that's really, you don't take it seriously. It's really sad that we have good people sitting on the council, good people on the Committee, but that's the elephant in the room. You cannot, and I've said it before, and you can do the research with Google and all that, all the theaters in the state, in the whole world are subsidized. The Kodak Theater, I mean, heavily subsidized. Dorothy Chandler's Pavilion, all of these, I mean, I don't know where, I mean, we made a mistake, own up to it, we do in business, cut your losses, and move on.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That is the only speaker card on this item. The recommendation from the Committee is to receive the report and adopt the resolution revising the schedule of meetings, function and duties, and standing committees. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, I will move Staff's Recommendations, one and two.
All right, Mr. Adam moves one and two. Discussion on the motion. Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. Again, Dr. Miller, thanks very much. We're going to move to Item 8B. That's the Planning Commission nomination from Councilmember Bill De La Peña, and the report was, I believe, is in our supplementals. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. As some of you may know, my Planning Commissioner, Dr. Mick Ferris, is leaving Thousand Oaks, has already left Thousand Oaks to move to New York, and as a result of that, I need to appoint a replacement for Dr. Ferris. I interviewed a total of six applicants over two days at City Hall, and they were all outstanding. Everybody brings with him or her a set of experience and a good dose of passion for our community. And after evaluating all six applicants, it is my honor to nominate tonight to be the next Planning Commissioner, David Newman. David Newman moved from the East Coast, is a transplant from the East Coast at the turn of the century, to Thousand Oaks, and attended the Johns Hopkins University, where he got an undergraduate degree, and also got a degree in Fine Arts from New York University. His, I was very impressed with his analytical mind, and although Dr. Ferris will be very hard to replace, another one with an analytical mind, I think that Mr. Newman will fit the role quite well, and will do a very good job carrying out the direction of the city staff and evaluating projects that will come before the city. So I will nominate Mr. David Newman to be a Planning Commissioner.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bill De La Peña places into nomination Mr. David Newman for the vacated position on the Planning Commission. Discussion on that, we do have a speaker card.
Mr. Fox, if I just may, Mr. Newman is not here tonight, he's out of the country.
Okay, very good, thank you. I was going to ask that. Mr. Kidway?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this item. I heard that we have many people with a passion to serve the community. Is the only way to serve the community to sit on the huge dais? Why is it that most of these Planning Commissioner appointees and former Commissioners never come out and speak on issues of importance to the city or residents? Or they speak very little? Once they're four years up or two years up, almost all of them, except for a handful, do not participate. And I looked in my vast database of the city to find Mr. David Newman, and I found two things. One was, I believe he was on the Auto Mall Committee, which is a good sign. And the second, I have a note that he's a Claudia Bill De La Peña supporter. And I did not go into the details, but that meant that he probably gave her money or had signs in front of his house or something, or wrote a letter to the editor, and I make note of that. And that's what these Planning Commission appointments and these other things are. They are political appointments, let's admit it. They're not about service to the community, especially since we are a bigger city now, like I talked about, having the signs ordinance there, because name ID is important. That's why almost no one ran against the Super Board of Supervisors, because it takes a lot of money to build name ID. And one of the ways to build name ID is to be sitting on these huge desks, daisies, it's not even a desk, dais, and get reported by reporters, et cetera, so that it's a jumping pace too for higher office. And there's nothing wrong with that, but if you take it to the other extreme, I just, just before coming over here, saw Senator Reed and Beener and the other people with their hands together, in a rare case of bipartisan thing. And that's why it is so disgusting that those people like me who try to come over here are completely ignored, as if we were the pariah, as if what we are saying is completely wrong. If you can see, show that to your TV, there's hardly any time left. Just as an example, that's from the City of Simi Valley, that's some of the projects. That's a detail of it. We are supposed to be at buildout. I mean, I'm getting that because I was selling paint, and five years ago, I asked for it, and every quarter, the City of Simi Valley sends me their report. The report used to be in the Planning Commission packet too, but it's hidden away. And that's why we have these problems with the tree plantings and all that, because the information is not being provided, and the city operates in a closed fashion. You need to change that, hopefully it will be done before I die. Hopefully, it will be done before I die.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Questions for staff or the council? Normally, I don't do this, but I do want to point out for the record, while there have been times where people are appointed, when I was appointed to the planning commission, I had never met Bob Lewis prior to my interview. And when I appointed Ms. Irwin, I met her on the practice field of the TO Titans. So I just want folks to understand that that's certainly not the case, that we appoint our political supporters one way or the other. I don't expect Ms. Bill De La Peña to even defend that comment. The fact is, there's a long history of people that apply for these commission positions, transportation, planning commission, and others that are virtually strangers to the council members prior to the interview process. So, Mr. Adams?
Just to add to that, my planning commission is fellow by name Doug Nichols. I never met him either.
There you go.
Ever. Never gave me a dime, never put up a sign. I interviewed a lot of good candidates and he, you know, was very qualified, and so I appointed him.
Yeah, I think there's, that's probably the general, maybe not always.
Never met him before that.
Right. All right, Ms. Bill De La Peña places into nomination Mr. Newman. As she noted, Mr. Newman is out of country, so he's not here this evening. If there's no discussion, vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 9A is our public hearing. That's been canceled. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, I understand, going back to the consent calendar, item 7P, you need to read the resolution into the record.
Yes, I need to read the ordinance title for 7P that was passed. It's an ordinance granting a franchise to maintain and use an oil pipeline to Crimson California Pipeline LP. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. We're going to move to item 9B. That is our second public hearing. And Madam Clerk, could you call item 9B for hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 9B regarding issuing a report and consideration of extending an interim urgency ordinance declaring moratorium on administrative review procedure for removal of four or more planted nursery grown parking area oak trees, or six or more planted nursery grown parking area landmark trees, and on issuance of any verification of owner planted oak tree exemption status. Consideration of an ad hoc tree ordinance committee to provide recommendations related to changes to the oak and landmark tree ordinances, MCA 2014-70145. Speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. And speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards and will be allowed five minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Prescott, you're going to provide the report, but just so to frame the issue and reading the report, this is really essentially what council has already decided on, sent to staff, and now we're getting a report back from basically the direction council has provided. Is that kind of correct?
Yes, it's follow-up to the previous direction.
All right, so no new information here, basically. This is basically what council asked you to do.
Right, we do have a suggestion for how the committee should be comprised, but the council did direct a committee.
All right, very good. Okay, Mr. Prescott, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On May 13th, the city council initiated a municipal code amendment relating to various changes to various aspects of the city's oak and landmark tree ordinances. On May 27th, the council adopted an urgency interim ordinance imposing a moratorium on certain activities subject to those ordinances while the code amendment was being processed. That moratorium per state law could only last 45 days. Tonight's action is to extend that moratorium as permitted by state law for another 10 and a half months, so the total timeframe would be one year. And during that period of time, the code amendment, which the city council processed, would be processed through the planning commission and back to city council with the commission's recommendation for action. On May 27th, in adopting, in conjunction with adopting the moratorium, the council also expressed interest in forming a committee to assist with the deliberations in the presentation and preparation of the ordinance. And staff has recommended a structure for that committee and an appointment process as part of this report. We're recommending that the committee have nine members, three residents, resident representatives, three business community representatives, two professionals in the oak tree landmark tree field, and one representative of a local public agency, so that would be a total of nine people. And we're recommending tonight that the city council appoint a couple of council members to constitute the committee, to interview applicants for the ad hoc committee, and to make recommendations to the full council, which we would expect to bring back in September, excuse me, in September. The other action that's part of tonight's agenda item is to adopt the written report of actions taken during the moratorium. That's a requirement of state law. And since the original moratorium was imposed, the staff has worked to establish the framework for the committee and also improve the public outreach relating to oak and landmark tree permits by reformatting the development activity report where those types of permits are called out and listed at the very beginning of the report in special categories. So with that synopsis, we're recommending that you adopt, do the four recommendations that are in your report, adopting the written report of actions taken, adopt the urgency ordinance for another 10 and a half months, and establish the committee as outlined.
All right, thanks, Mr. Prescott. We have three speaker cards, but at this point, questions for staff. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I would like to thank Councilmember Irwin for the suggestion of the committee. I think it'll be a very effective and fair way to overhaul our oak tree ordinance. My question to you, Mr. Prescott, when it comes to, you know, you've got here three residents, three businesses, a couple of professionals and a public agency, if a homeowners' association representative were to apply, where would you feel that that would fit in? In the business side?
That would be in the resident's side.
That'd be in the resident's side? Why do you think that?
Homeowners' association, that would be our primary contact with the residents of the community through the homeowners' associations. So we would notify all of the homeowners' associations who have registered with us, which there's probably around 125 associations, for them to spread the word to their membership of the ability to apply for positions on the committee. And that would be our outreach to the homeowners within Thousand Oaks, one of the ways of outreach.
I guess I just, when I saw three residents, I was thinking more of, you know, individuals representing themselves versus an HOA.
No, they would be representing, they would be individuals.
All right.
The people appointed.
All right, well, I guess we'll leave it to the council members. And since we're on that topic, I don't know if it's a little premature or not, but as far as the two council members that might be willing to do this, oh, you got something on that?
I'll get to that. Let's get the speaker card.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Yeah, that was my question, because about the HOA, so your plan or idea was to tell all of our HOAs to get the word out in their communities so we could potentially end up with thousands of applications to want to sit on the tree committee? Or?
We would use the associations as we have before, whenever there have been proposed changes to significant citywide ordinances as a means of trying to get the word out as a part of outreach to let people know of the opportunity to apply to be on the committee in this case, yes. And we would probably also publish something in the newspaper, do press releases.
And then my other question is, there is a recommendation for a public agency other than the city. And are our public agencies, which have their own jurisdictions, do they have to follow our oak tree ordinance?
Generally, yes. There is an exception in the education code for the school district if it relates to classroom facilities, and that's an action that would actually have to be taken by the school board to exempt themselves from local zoning. But there's no such exemption for Canal Rock and Park, for example. So they, when CRPD wants to build a new park or make changes to an existing park, they have to file a development permit application with the city.
So another potential public agency could be COSCA, correct?
Well, COSCA, I think, you know, is a joint powers of the city and the park district, so to me, that would be, you know, we put in parentheses, "other than the city itself", so I'm thinking they would be more of a, more of a city agency for that respect. I mean, I think COSCA could, a COSCA representative could apply, but, and that would be up to the council to decide.
Because I'm thinking we have a public representative on COSCA who's been the chair of COSCA for a very long time. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, we have three speaker cards. Mr. Kidway, you're first up. After Mr. Kidway, we have Joe Santoro, and then our last speaker card will be Joan Edwards.
Nick Kidway, Island of Newbury Park, Director of Concerns, City of Thousand Oaks. Honorable, I was going to say commissioners, I don't know why, getting old. Well, council people, if it quacks like a duck, walks like a duck, it is a duck. And so regardless of what you say, people are smart enough to know the difference. I guess part of the job of the council and government is to tire people to death and keep bringing the same issue back again. I've seen this for 25 years, so this is not new. This is modus operandi. Except when it comes to chopping the trees at a shopping center. That's done pronto, before we can act properly, even though council member goes there for photo op opportunity, but it was still too late. I again beg to say that no committee is needed. It's just pure waste of taxpayer time. This is, this ordinance and this committee thing is basically a feel-good ordinance to make, have feather in the cap for the reelection. That's one of the wastes of effort. No heads have fallen in staff despite what happened, not even a slight, I mean, I just read somewhere that some government servants had to take a reduction in pay. There's only two simple things that are needed. I don't see why the council is going, except for political reasons with this ordinance. One, the original intent of the ordinance, which I was for, is to exempt homeowners, except in rare cases, I know some, like homes in North Ranch where they, some homes have five oak trees, and to remove some of them, they add to the neighborhood, and that goes beyond property rights. But except for that, homeowners should be exempt and be the king of the house. The second is the exception made for business owner planted trees. That should be removed, and the limit of maybe three trees before a hearing is triggered should be there. If TO TV will show that, I just always love to have overhead, that's 349, thanks to the ACON. And the papers will do it, but what has happened is, I mean, what will the planning commission do? I mean, the planning commission is a place for the city to get additional taxes, $1,400, I think $1,600 now, and it will be $2,000 before I know it, to appeal these kind of things. That's what it is. I mean, this is the report of all the business activity. It's hidden way deep in the website, so hardly anybody can, will see it. I even don't see it, because I mean, I don't have time, I mean, I have limited time. I mean, you have to make 10 clicks to get to it. And they won't change it. They won't put it on the front page, just like city of Simi Valley and others do it, and like city of Simi Valley. I mean, just one phone call and I'm getting it every quarter at no charge, a PDF. And what, the planning commission is a joke. I mean, I almost would like to say, get rid of the planning commission. You really don't need a planning commission, because look at, I mean, I could do the math or the simple calculation. I mean, there's no, there's no schedule for them. Meeting canceled, meeting canceled, meeting canceled. That's what it is. And they won't even put me on the mailing list so that I know when they are meeting. They say, well, we put it on Outlook. I don't use Outlook, I use Gmail. Well, you should really not be coming to the meetings. That's, that's the fine line, and I can understand that. I appreciate that. But there's a lot of concerned citizens that really care and, for various reasons, cannot come and attend the meetings. Once again, don't waste taxpayer funds by having another committee. What is needed, if you need a committee, is a budget task force. I mean, there's no CPA, there's no accountant over here, financial advisor maybe. These are hard times still. Advice from the citizens for that. But this is, I mean, it's really ridiculous. I hope some good council people will run and be bold enough to say that these things that are happening in the city council, they're not for the benefit of the citizens at large and for the city at large and our 50th anniversary year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Joe Santoro, and following Mr. Santoro will be Joan Edwards. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joe Santoro. I live in Westlake Village at the Braymar Garden Town Homes, which is located opposite the North Ranch playing fields. I've been a member of the homeowners' association and on the board of homeowners' associations there for nine years, also on their landscape committee, their architectural committee, and now their oak tree committee. Not sure if this is the appropriate form, but we want to express our concern about a moratorium on issuing of permits and how it may impact our homeowners' association. We have 80 townhomes there, and we have approximately right now, out of 101 oak trees that were planted 22 years ago, we still have 88 of them remaining. Many of them we have attempted to remove because of damage to driveways, walkways, and sewer lines. Last November, we had an arborist report done because we were going to go for a permit for six trees to be removed, six oak trees. Many of them were lifting driveways. We have concrete slab driveways, and there's a 30-inch wide median, and we got oak trees planted in between them, so there's not much room for growth of a trunk there. We found out from our tree vendor, it was going to cost $2,800 to remove the trees and $3,200 in fees and permit to the city. So we decided, well, if it's that costly and the fees are fixed, we should maybe try and look forward to see what other trees we might need to remove in the upcoming year or two, so it'll be more cost-effective. So we didn't go through with that permit application, other than we did have two removed because one was diseased and one was dead, so we were able to get around that. But we want to know if, if there's a moratorium on all these permits being issued, if there's any way that we could be grandfathered in on this or whatever, if we've got trees that are causing damage to driveways. Right now, we have two driveways that have to be replaced at about $5,000 a piece. And we don't want to wait another year before the damage is there that we then have to incur the additional expense of $5,000. So we just hope that this committee will take into consideration some of the impact of prolonged removal of a property where the density of these trees was really overplanted 22 years ago. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Questions?
Okay.
That's the other side of the equation, which I think is important to hear. All right, our final speaker is Joan Edwards. Good evening, Ms. Edwards.
Mayor Fox and council members, I was interested to read that the mayor's approved an interesting thing yesterday at the mayor's meeting. I don't know if you went, if you were there, at the mayor's national meeting. They approved the idea that trees should take care of their tree canopies for clean air reasons. for clean air reasons and for just health reasons. That was one of their four recommendations, tree canopies. So I, I hope you were there, I hope you voted for it. I don't know if you did. I can't help but think that it's a good idea for more people in our community to be able to talk about trees. Maybe it's not the final solution, I don't know. But I'm happy to know that we're gonna maybe have some smart people who know about trees. Now, I belong to homeowners association. I'm sorry, I don't ever read anything they send me. I don't have any, except for the bill they send me every year. I do pay that. And I suppose they might have some people who care, but really, it's, homeowners, I think for the most part, they can take care of their own trees and I'm not too concerned, except for if they've got some 200, 300, or 400-year-old corcus lobata on their property. I'm not going to like to see them cut them down very easily. But most other trees, I find it a little bit appalling that the city would get into so much detail that they charge them, and you have to do this, and you have to get approvals, blah, blah, blah. When I asked about the committee, though, I was a little bit taken back by the answer I got, where are you going to find the people? You know, when I hear chamber of commerce and business groups and developers groups, and probably will put something in the newspapers, that's not good enough. No, we definitely have to put some, if we really want the people who care about the trees in our community to be on this committee, and I hope we have a couple of people who just, just because they love trees, can be on the committee, not me, but other people. And because there's a lot of people who know a lot about trees and why they're important, and I, I hope that you'll put good size notices in the acorn and the star and, and other local things that people will read so that they'll apply. And I don't know who you're going to have interviewing these people, but I, I hope you don't have it heavily weighted on the business developer side because I can see that that might be happening, and I hope it doesn't. I can't think of anything else to say right now, except for I still hate the idea of hearing about parking lot trees, and now I've decided to nursery-brown trees. I don't like that sound either. Trees are just trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. That completes our speaker cards. Anything to go back to staff on? Mr. Prescott, any comment?
Mr. Kearns will make a comment regarding.
All right, Mr. Kearns, good evening.
The issue that Braemar representative brought up.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, members of council. The comments from Santoro about, about the Braemar Garden situation causing property damage, in 2010, when we revised the ordinance last go-round, we included trees that are causing substantial property damage, just trees that could be removed under a no-fee permit, and we'll evaluate it to determine that there is substantial damage. And if it is, then we'll have, we'll allow that removal, and then that tree would be replaced, an appropriate tree for that plant area, so it doesn't continue to cause the same problem.
All right.
So that would not be affected by this moratorium.
All right, we appreciate that. Okay, we have a report in front of us that completes our speaker cards. We're going to close the public hearing, and the, the item is now open for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Price.
Thank you. Just as a point of discussion, I like the idea that we're having this committee. I noticed that the water rate committee was significantly larger, and I, I don't know whether there were some inherent problems with the committee being as large as it was. And I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, whether or not nine is a good number. I know that the smaller, the easier it is to manage, but I'm just wondering if there might be some other representation that is missing. And I don't have a suggestion as to who that would be, but I'd like to hear the thoughts of some of my fellow council members on that.
All right. Mr. Adam, then Ms. Irwin, and then Ms. Bill de la Peña.
After you.
Ms. Irwin.
Well, since, since we were having a discussion about homeowners groups, maybe separating, let's say, adding some, an additional resident, if we're going to be putting the, the homeowners groups within the residents, or if we want an odd number, maybe adding two additional residents and making them both representatives from home owners group, homeowners groups. But, but you do have to be wary that it gets unwieldy at a certain point.
It's two items. Let me just, for clarification on the council. One is management of the committee and the water committee. There was actually reasons why it was the size it was. The second is a very real issue of quorum. The bigger the committee, the more difficult it is to have a quorum. Without a quorum, they can't operate. So, you know, we're coming into the summer months, I know we all recognize that's, that's an issue. So I just point that out in answer to your question, actually.
I appreciate that.
Not advocating one way or the other.
No, I understand. I, I get the concern that Councilmember Bill de la Peña kind of expressed, that representatives of the homeowners associations are not perhaps who we want to make up those three positions. We would rather have them be individual homeowners themselves with their own independent opinions. And I think that's what I'd like to see, anyway.
Yeah, you know, we can, we do have the flexibility example. I think somebody mentioned we could add two for 11. I think Mrs. Irwin said that. Mrs. Irwin said that, for the record. That's Jackie Irwin. Where we could have two homeowner representatives in and of themselves. That certainly is an option that we could throw out there if that's going to bring some consensus to the council.
I, I think that it's, you know, they have different issues than individual homeowners. A lot of times, just like the gentleman just said, they're more densely packed, representing, let's say, a condo association that has, you know, they're talking about 100 trees there. So I think they bring a different perspective than individual homeowners.
Is there agreement in the council that if we were to add two people, it would be from specifically in the committee? We'll get to committee thing in a second on the makeup of the committee, but we had identified two representatives from homeowner associations to be added to this as a separate apart from residents? Is that where, is that where we're going?
I like that. No, I'd be fine with that.
Well, I think Mr. Prescott said we had about 125 HOAs in the city, and that covers quite a bit of a single-family home. So if the committee were to choose a representative for the residents, would the requirement then be that that resident not be a member of an HOA?
No.
I don't know how.
No.
No.
I think what I'm thinking of is, is that you would have two HOA representatives. Now, their task would be, they're representing their HOA, so they're going to have to go back to their board of directors, and they're going to have to get input from their board of directors. So we're adding another layer here. But you, you know, when you appoint the HOA, unless they're going to send the president or whoever and say, okay, you're speaking for the HOA, that's it. But the idea would be, they would be representing that HOA. I'm not suggesting that I serve on the committee, but I would suggest to whoever's serving on the committee, I would pick a HOA that has a significant amount of oak trees, as opposed to an HOA that has essentially no oak trees. That would just make sense to me, because you're going to, well, I'll just leave it at that. So that's my sense. Because you are going to want a balance. That's why we had a large number of people on the water committee. We wanted a cross-section of folks, not necessarily everybody with a half-acre lot that it was pretty predictable they wanted to change in the water rates. We needed to have a cross-section. So, so let me just offer this as a friendly amendment to the council, is that we would add two additional members to the committee, making it a total of 11, and those two representatives would be authorized members of recognized HOAs in the community with the expectation that they would come from HOAs that had a significant amount of oak trees within their jurisdiction. Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Yes. Now, the, I mean, that is a good suggestion. Now, we also have a staff suggestion that we have three business owners, as well as three residents, two professionals, and one public agency. Now, if I'm looking at the three business owners.
Can I just make a, I don't want to interrupt you. It actually says business representatives.
Or business representatives, yes.
Yeah, not necessarily owners. So it could be a chamber person.
Could be a chamber person. I'm just assuming three business representatives who may not be living in Thousand Oaks.
Could be.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we have two HOAs that, as we heard tonight, that may, that have lots of oak trees. So then we have the three residents. So I'm already looking at a fair makeup, or trying to see that, seeing that a fair makeup is challenged in this case, because as was the case with the water rate structure committee, they came up with a recommendation that the council ultimately did not approve. And we, the council voted on something that was not the outcome of, that was contrary to the outcome of the water rate structure committee. And in speaking to some of the members of the water rate structure committee, they said that the water rate structure committee was inherently unfair, inherently unfair because they were large lot representatives in addition to public agency, which is also a large water user, in addition to business owners that are large water users. And so in the end, they all defeated the, when it came to a final vote, they defeated the tiered system, which we eventually implemented. So if I'm looking at three residents, three business owners, two HOAs, two professionals, and one public agency, I'm seeing that the residents are going to be in the minority, in a sense. So I'm, I'm going to, that, that is what, what I'm seeing. Unless we increase the number of residents, perhaps, or we eliminate the public agency representative and replace that one with an HOA representative, perhaps that would be a fairer makeup. And as you said, Mayor Fox, quorum was an issue at some of these meetings two years ago, because we had 17 members, I believe.
Maybe my math's not right, but I'm, I'm adding a total of six, which essentially would be residents, because common sense tells you the HOA is a resident person. Three individual residents, that would be six. So that's two professionals, one local person, that's three, and then three business folks. Three and three is six. So it appears to me that you have half the committee is from one interest group. Half the committee is from one interest group. The others, for example, I'm going to recommend to the council that the public agency representative is somebody from the park district, and for obvious reasons. The park district has arguably more trees in it than the city does in terms of, and certainly the large trees. So they're going to have an interest in and of themselves. The business folks, I think it's across the board. I think, or I think it's a mixed bag. You are going to have some interests from a business perspective that is different than a residential concern, and you may have some that are very similar. But just in adding it up, I see half the, half the community, half the representation from the committee is made up of homeowners.
That is, that is true. I would agree with you, but the residents, whichever representative, representative they may be, may have a different opinion from the two representatives from an HOA, as we heard tonight, Mr., I don't know, from the representative from, from Braemar. If we have two of those, and then...
Well, that would be up to the committee. You know, I'm going to trust the committee, you know, have a cross-section of folks. If we, if we get everybody with a like mind, we're, we're going to have, and that may be fine, and maybe aligned with what council wants to, but I would, I would strongly recommend whoever's on the committee is, diversity of thought is a good thing.
In my view, we're not looking for a predetermined outcome here. We're looking for a representative sampling of the residents of our community.
Yes.
So we want to hear from everybody, and I think that, I think that this makeup, adding those other two positions from HOAs, I think achieves that, so, in my view, anyway.
Yeah. What we want to try to avoid is, as much as possible, is we get a report back, kind of like we did with the water report, and we get, you know, 15, 25 people here that say, hey, this isn't going to work for me. And you achieve that by having diversity in your group.
No, we don't want a predetermined outcome, obviously. I'm just using the water rate structure committee as an example, where after the fact, after the vote, after the recommendation, they express, some of, some of the members expressed that it wasn't entirely a fair representation, which is the reason why the vote, the final vote by the committee was different from what the council eventually enacted, so that's why.
Right. All right. So yes or no on the friendly amendment for the HOAs?
Yes.
Mr. Adam.
We, Councilmember Price is right. The price is right. We want a balance, we want.
Can I use that?
Yeah. How about that?
No, no, I do the comedy here.
I defer to the mayor.
All right, keep it straight.
We want a balance, we want a fair representation, we want to hear from all parties, and that's why I think this committee idea is great. I do, I do think, though, there's a difference between a homeowner and a homeowners association.
Yes, but neither of them are a business.
A homeowners association's a business. They send, they bill, they charge, they, they have, they have a different perspective, while they do, than an individual homeowner. So I'm afraid the balance might be skewed a little bit if we add two homeowners associations, because they'll send their reps down, which could be paid employees of the HOA.
May I, may I make a point here?
There's good discussion.
Yeah, the HOA is members, owners, homeowners of that community. HOAs hire property management companies. We're not looking to have the property management company be represented on this, on this panel at all. A, an HOA member, such as the one we heard from tonight, I think would be a good representative to hear from, quite frankly.
All right, well, that's a good distinction. So in other words, it wouldn't be the property management company.
No, as a matter of fact, I would, I would say that we would make that language clear, that it not be somebody from a property management company.
Yeah.
Because more often than not, property management companies tend to speak for the HOAs, and that's what I would want to avoid.
I think in this particular item, in this setting, you're going to get a resident that lives in Thousand Oaks that serves on the board of the HOA. And certainly, if I was on the committee, that would be a criteria. I would not be entertaining a property manager. That's not what we're after, so.
All right.
So with that as the caveat, we can just add, add that as a language, this HOA representative would be, in fact, a, a homeowner that resides in the HOA, not the property manager.
That happens to sit on the board.
All right. So if there's no objection, Ms. Lawrence, if we can add that as, under B, to the staff's recommendation, so that would change the committee membership to 11, and then we would add two HOA representatives with the language that, that I've inserted. All right. Anything else on the makeup of the committee before we get to the council members who are going to serve on the committee? Are we on the same page there? So just to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't anticipate that this is going to happen, but with the outreach, what if we don't achieve the numbers that we discussed here tonight? Are we able to say up to the three residents, up to two HOA members? I'm just...
Again, I think...
I don't want it to have to come back to us again, because we can't reach those numbers.
In this particular case, because of the discussion, and I think it's a good discussion relative to balance of the committee, I don't see any other way around. Staff's going to have to bring that back, because we may have to reevaluate the ratio of residents versus business. I don't see the public agency person leaving. You know, the two professionals may go to one if we only get two homeowner groups, for example. So I did, and that's my sense, but it's up to the council. If you want to leave it open to staff, and they would report back, either way. I just, there's been a lot of discussion on the committee makeup, so my sense is, I think council's going to want to have a say in that. All right. So, so the committee makeup is as outlined and amended. So now we move to the committee, council committee. Mr. Adam.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Fox. Well, I would like to suggest two members that I think would bring, as we're looking for balance, that would bring balance to this committee, and that would be Councilmember Bill de la Peña and Councilmember Price.
I love it when somebody volunteers to other people. That is just very good.
That's another good point. I would be, I'm sure we'd all be willing to do it, but I'm, I'm just looking for that balance.
Yeah.
And I think Councilmember Price has a point of view on this that I respect, and I want to have that incorporated, and I also, Councilmember Bill de la Peña. Now, whether they'd be willing to serve or not, I guess we'd have to ask them.
Give them an affirmative nod.
But, and we'd also have...
Absolutely, and I appreciate the vote of confidence, Eric. Absolutely, and I appreciate the vote of confidence, Eric. I really do. Thank you.
Claudia?
I'd be absolutely pleased to serve with this bill.
I think you would be an ideal member.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
And I think you would too, Claudia, so.
All right. So there's no objection. Mr. Price and Ms. Bill de la Peña will represent the council on the oak tree selection committee process. We also have the staff recommendation as amended, and I believe that's all the items. So with those two items, and then I refer to council back to the first page of the report, who wants to make the motion to codify all this? Mr. Adam.
All right. Let me make that motion that we adopt the written report. We extend the urgency ordinance for another 10 and a half months. We establish the committee, and we have Councilmember Bill de la Peña and Price do the interviews for that committee.
And you included the amendment to the committee membership.
And the amendment to the committee membership that Mayor Fox introduced.
All right. Discussion on Mr. Adam's motion. Vote, please.
The motion carries five zero, and the ordinance title is an inter- urgency ordinance extending moratorium established by ordinance number 1596 NS on administrative processing of requests involving removal of four or more planted nursery-grown parking lot oak trees, or six or more nursery-grown landmark trees, and on issuance of any owner-planted oak tree exemption permit.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. All right, that item is approved, and we will move now to item 9C. That is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you call item 9C for a public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 9C, Los Angeles County Animal Care and Control Extension for Services, Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, and Fee Change for Unspayed, Unneutered Dogs, IRC 2014-70189. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council on this item, and we have no cards.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Ware, I believe you're going to handle the report this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you, tonight before you are two items related to animal control services. The first is a joint exercise of powers agreement with the County of Los Angeles to provide animal control services for the city. The second is a resolution changing the fee for unspayed, unneutered dogs from $45 to $60 per year. Providing animal control services is a municipal responsibility for its citizens. Animal control services are provided by people specifically trained in providing these services, requiring them to deal with both domesticated and wildlife animals. It is a common practice that municipalities obtain animal control services via contract with a county animal control agency. In Ventura County, most cities obtain their animal control services through contract. The City of Thousand Oaks has obtained these services from the County of Los Angeles for the past 20-plus years. The City of Thousand Oaks originally contracted with Los Angeles County for animal control services beginning in June, July 1992. There have been four extensions of that contract over the years. The current contract expires on June 30th. Pursuant to Section 6.2 of the current municipal services agreement, an extension to this agreement can be approved with consent of the city council and the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors for periods not exceeding five years each. After reviewing our animal control services and costs, and also contacting various cities, a decision to move forward with an extension with Los Angeles County was made. This information was detailed in the memo from the Community Development Department Director to the city manager dated February 3rd and as part of your packet. The Agora Animal Care Center is our local provider of animal services. Services provided by this facility include animal licensing, dealing with unleashed dogs, nuisance complaints such as excessive dog barking, and animals that may be in unsafe The Agora Animal Care Center also provides sheltering services for a wide variety of animals, including dogs, cats, birds, horses, and wild animals that are brought into this As example of the quantity of services provided, in the last full fiscal year, animal care and control staff have housed approximately 1,100 animals for over 3,700, about 3,700 days, and issued over 10,000 animal licenses for the citizens of Thousand Oaks. As part of this renewal proposal, the format has changed from a municipal services agreement to a joint powers agreement. This changes in, this changes in format is only due to a government code section that limits the use of the previous format to jurisdictions only within the county. As Thousand Oaks is not in Los Angeles County, the format of this agreement was changed from the municipal services agreement to a joint powers agreement. Although the agreement is greatly similar to past, there are a few changes. Legal staff from both the city and Los Angeles County have worked to clarify the insurance indemnity sections of the agreement to reflect current standards and needs for both agencies. Additionally, language for insurance requirements for the city was added to reflect practice that was already implemented in the current agreement. Finally, the agreement includes this year's fee modifications. As part of the current contract, yearly modifications of fees on an annual addendum is present. Similar to many jurisdictions, Los Angeles County modifies their fees on a regular basis to reflect the cost of providing these services. Fees include the cost for such items as field services and the cost of animal housing. These are billed to the city on a per-unit basis. Fees established for fiscal year 2014-15 have been included in the joint power agreement, and staff's costs based on our current use levels are within the established budget for this coming fiscal year. There was one mistake in the staff report on the display of the change in fees from the current fiscal year to the next, located on the chart on page three of the staff report and page 38 of your packet. A corrected version was placed in your supplemental packet today. Although the numbers in the chart were incorrect, staff's analysis of the changes and the impact are correct as to the next fiscal year. Finally, as part of this item is a request to modify one license fee for unspayed, unneutered dogs from $45 to $60. Revenue from the license fees is used to offset the overall cost of animal control services. All license fee revenue, less the processing fee, is used for this purpose. In addition to the license fee offset, revenue collected from impound and housing fees also offsets our overall costs. The city uses the Los Angeles County adopted license fees as a guideline in establishing our own fees. Attachment three to the staff report shows a listing of all LA County jurisdictions' adopted license fees. Thousand Oaks adopted fees are consistent with most of these other jurisdictions. The fee alteration will assist in offsetting the increased cost of providing animal control services to the citizens of Thousand Oaks under the new proposed agreement. Present today in our, in our audience here is Whitney Dwan, which is the city liaison with LA County for animal control services. Denise Rosen, which some of you may know, is the local shelter manager of the Agora Animal Care Center. Carlos Pigneta is the acting manager for enforcement services and has helped us in the past on some of our canvassing efforts. And Lieutenant Jaime Paula Fox, did I get that right? Paula Fox is a supervisor of licensing with LA County Animal Control, and they're available only for any questions that may arise. And staff is also available.
Questions for staff? Ms. Irwin?
Thank you for recognizing my hand waving over on the other side. Thank you, Mr. Ware. I had, I did have a couple of questions. The first, I'm not really clear. How long are we in this agreement for?
This agreement would be for a five-year extension.
And I think that we've talked about, I think the last time that we approved this, we talked about it also. Did we really, did we actually go to the county, Ventura County, and ask what it would cost for them to provide these services? Really look completely competitively at Ventura? I mean, I know we get great service from LA County, but when I see this chart, you said you went to the cities of Simi and Ventura and Camarillo. Did you actually go to the county and ask what it would cost to provide the services and what additional services they would provide?
In the past, we actually have contacted Ventura County. What we had asked them is if we, if we provided a summary of our overall service numbers from, from Thousand Oaks on a yearly basis, if they could provide us that estimate. And they were told us because of the way they, they actually calculate cost for services to their, their contract agencies, they couldn't use our numbers because it's done on some type of paraded basis that includes all the contract cities and would be calculated at that point in time on how they do that. So they were not able to provide us a direct answer to that type of question.
Because it does seem, if this has been going for 25 years at one point, and I'm not saying right now, but to do a, you know, almost go out for an RFP and do a comparison about, you know, between Ventura and LA County.
We did discuss that among staff and with our comparison to the other contract cities and the cost that they were experiencing on a fiscal year basis that far exceeded really what our services were being costed out with LA County and with the language that was in our existing contracts for those extensions. We did do that seeking for like, try and get like-like for services that was shown in the staff report and the attached memo to the city manager, that we felt it was, it was a cost-effective way for us to continue with LA County contract.
And you looked at the different services provided also. I know that a few years back, we put additional people out in the field to look for unlicensed animals, and I don't know if the city ended up paying for that or if LA County paid for it, but you did look at those different types of services too, and you made a comparison.
Yeah, the actual, I believe the program you were specifically talking about was a canvassing effort about three to four years ago that we did, although we, we actually budgeted for the cost of that program because it is a cost to the city to conduct that. The revenue that was derived from that actually far, far was greater than the cost, and actually we had a zero cost to us in the long run and actually added additional revenue. So those are the types of things that, that we looked at. We didn't look at the canvassing efforts of Ventura County specifically, but in our experience with Los Angeles County, those efforts were so cost-effective, it was actually a plus for the city in the long run, and actually dropped our overall, our overall net costs extremely low as compared to other cities. In fact, I believe that initial year after the, or that the canvassing was done, our net cost for animal control was below $100,000, which, which is far less than any of the cities are paying.
All right, well, and then I guess that begs the question, are we going to be doing another one of those canvassing activities?
We have discussed that somewhat in-house. It was not proposed in this budget cycle, but we've already made discussions that that would probably be included in the budget cycle that would be starting next year for the following two fiscal years. So we've, we've regularly done it from, from what I can tell from records, Community Development only having this, this responsibility over the past few years. We were doing it basically on a five-year rotation, and that year would be coming up through that next budget cycle.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ware.
Any other questions? Mr. Adam.
Thank you. Happy to see that the Agora Shelter's a no-kill shelter. I think that's really important. Do they spay and neuter on the premises there at the Agora Shelter?
Denise Rosen just spoke behind, they do the animals that are within their shelter. They don't, I don't think they provide that service to the public, but those animals that come through the shelter and housing are out for adoption, they do, correct?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, that's good to hear. And just the other question I had, so we want to bill $60 for an unneutered dog and 20 for one that's been fixed. So is the difference more or less, do you see that as a deterrent, that, hey, get your dog fixed and you're going to pay less?
I believe that is the reason for that, that fee change, is to, to encourage people to maybe renew their animals.
Yeah. That's maybe a better word, encourage. Well, if that's the case, the county charges 75 bucks. Do we want to go to 75? Encourage people to get their animals fixed? I mean, that's what a responsible pet owner does. I forget that, I don't know, we don't, probably don't want to go to 75, but I guess, I just, you know, that's what this is all about, and that's how we end up with, you know, no-kill shelters because people are responsible enough to have their animals fixed.
Yeah, and I would note that our shelter does an extremely high-level job of working to have adoptions through their programs and have a large amount of volunteers through their programs, and really do a good job in getting those words out for adoption to the public.
All right. Thanks. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Pigneta. I'm the lieutenant for the Enforcement Services Division. In regards to your question, is the Ventura County is the one that charged $75? The LA County $60 for an altered dog? Yes, you are correct. The purpose is, the fee was established not to create a profit, but to assist the shelter with, you know, keeping animals alive for a longer period, and also encourage people to get their animals altered. It is a substantial discount from 60 to 20, to $20. Animals that belong to senior citizens is $7 for?
Yes.
Yes. $7 for altered, animals that belong to senior citizens.
Thank you.
We have no more speaker cards on this item. It's a pleasure with the council. I just note on page 37 for the viewing public, just to follow up on Ms. Irwin's comment, the City of Camarillo, which is approximately half the size of Thousand Oaks, is 66,000. They pay $251,000 a year. That's more than $100,000 more a year for their services Ventura County. Simi Valley is essentially the same size as Thousand Oaks. They pay $243,000. Again, another $100,000 more than Thousand Oaks. So I'm not sure, regardless of what the county did, I don't see them making up. And I know when we switched, it was a cost issue, no question about it. That staff looked at it, and it was dramatically cheaper to go with LA County.
From, I was not part of that, that was, when it was in Public Works, but my understanding is that was a significant part, along with service issues also.
Yep.
And also the proximity of the shelter to Thousand Oaks citizens.
And the shelter's closer, actually. So, and it is a no-kill shelter. So, yeah. All right. What's a pleasure with the council? How about Ms. Jackie Irwin? Ms. Jackie Irwin, would you like to make this motion?
Oh, you're finally looking in this direction?
Yes, I am.
All right. I move staff recommendations one and two.
All right. Ms. Jackie Irwin moves items one and two. Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. We'll move to item 9D. That's also a public hearing. Ms. Lawrence, could you call item 9D for a public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 9D, Landscape and Lighting Assessment, District Number 79-2, Annual Levy, Fiscal Year 2014-15. Speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council, and we have no cards.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alicon. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Fox and members of the city council. My name is, my name is Akbar Alicon. I'm a Public Works analyst. Joining me on the dais is Associate Financial Analyst Nancy Arietta and Public Works Director Jay Spurgeon. Tonight is the public hearing for the lighting and landscaping assessment district. We do this every year. We call it the LLAD for short. Excuse me while I queue up our presentation here. Why is the LLAD important? The landscape district pays for about 40% of all these city street trees and public landscaping, and that's denoted by the blue area on the map in front of you. On the flip side, the lighting district pays for about 7,314 street lights throughout the city, as well as the maintenance and operations of 138 traffic signals. So together, these two funds really go a long way in making Thousand Oaks look the way that it does. I want to share a few quick highlights with you for the upcoming fiscal year. There are no annexations tonight for fiscal year 2014-15. There are only a handful of projects, so what we decided to do is just roll those over into next year's annexation class. The average adjustment for landscapes, landscape assessments is supposed to be 4.1%. On the lighting side, we're going to continue at the maximum assessment rate, which is a 3% raise for a total of $13.54 for this upcoming year. This slide shows a more detailed breakdown of both the landscaping and lighting assessment rates for the low, average, and maximum. And there's quite a wide spectrum here on the landscaping side, as you can see, depending on which zone you're in or which part of the city that you live in. However, for the average homeowner, what we're looking at is $168 per year, or about $14 a month. On the lighting side, there's a uniform rate of $13.54, about 40 cents higher than last year. And again, this is the maximum rate, which we have been at for about four years now. When we look at our expenses, all but one of our landscape line items have been relatively stable for the past several years. However, we're still experiencing a 4% increase this year, and that's really being driven by one particular thing, and that is water. If you look at the furthest to the left, year 2009, we're paying just over $600,000 for water, district-wide. Fast forward five years later... Fast forward five years later in 2014, that has now ballooned to just over 1.2 million, or at least we're on track for that for this fiscal year by month-end. So in light of this, this gives even greater importance to some of the projects that we have queued up. One of those is a groundwater study, which was considered at the last council meeting, and the implementation of more water-friendly vegetation going forward. There's a few challenges that the LLAD will have going forward. One of those we just discussed, which is increased water costs going forward until some of those projects can come online. The second one is the lighting district, we have operated at roughly a $300,000 shortfall for a few years now. And since the assessment rate is already at the max, we aren't able to raise assessments, which means we need to look at other solutions in the short term that might come in the form of a general fund subsidy, or in the long term, maybe some projects that help us reduce costs, such as a more efficient lighting retrofit. The action tonight in front of you is to conduct and close this public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report, and then adopt another resolution ordering the levying collection of assessments for this upcoming year. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you. Good evening. I was just wondering, how is the city doing in transforming or transitioning from what used to be lush landscaping into native California plants and drought-tolerant plants in order to reduce that water bill?
We do have a few projects actually programmed into our current CIP, two-year CIP, and in fact, perhaps Jay can talk more about what some of those projects might be.
Yes, we do have some projects coming up. One is a citywide landscape master plan to do that, to actually look at what kind of landscaping we currently have, where we need to make retrofits where appropriate. Part of really another step in our visioning process, looking ahead, what do we want to do and how do we want our landscape spaces to look like? Also, irrigation controller retrofits, those help with being more water-efficient too. So those are a couple of examples on the landscape side.
Yeah, when we have a $300,000-plus shortfall, yes, lush landscaping is wonderful, then I, but I do think that it is high time that we look at succulents and other plants that can be quite attractive. I mean, dipping into the general fund, I'm not quite sure if that would be the proper way to go. So I'm glad that that is part of the discussion during our vision meetings or visioning meetings, and I look forward to seeing a different landscaping plan in the city.
Other questions? All right, we have no speaker cards on this item. The recommendations are 1, 2, and 3. What is the pleasure of the council? Ms. Jackie Irwin.
I'll move the staff recommendations 1, 2, and 3.
All right. Ms. Jackie Irwin moves Recommendation 1, 2, and 3. Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Mr. Mitnick. Akbar, don't run off. All right, Mr. Mitnick, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may not know this, but you just witnessed Akbar's last presentation to city council. Yeah? Akbar, next week, I think Thursday is your last day, Akbar has decided to take a position with a private company out of the area, and he has been with the city three years, four years. He's done an exemplary job with us, and you've seen the caliber and quality of his presentations improve over the years, and you've done a great job, Akbar, and you will be greatly missed. I just wanted to take that moment and inform the council. That was the police chief clapping. We don't do that here.
Actually, it was Mr. Kidwai, it's close to the police chief, yeah. Only just a little different, right?
Well, he was clapping too.
Okay. Congratulations, Akbar, we wish you the best. No holds, no grudges because you're going to the dark side. It's okay. We'll just, those of us who stay over here on the public service side doing the good work, you can go make the big bucks. Good for you. All right. The other public hearing was canceled. We'll go to Item 10. That's departmental reports, and that would be Mr. Prescott. Forty years of public service, I might add.
I like it on this side.
I know you do.
Tonight's matter is a request for concurrent processing of development entitlements along with a zone change, which has been filed for property located at 2080 East Tilcrest, which the council may remember as being the site of the formerly-proposed Mini Mansions Senior Affordable Housing Project, which was withdrawn before hearings. The property has now been purchased by someone else. They intend to build a nine-lot, single-family home tract, which would be consistent with the general plan designation for the property. They have filed a request to change the zoning to RPD 4.5U SFD and are asking that the, they be allowed to process the tract map along with the zone change. And our recommendation is for the council to allow that. It's fairly typical, and it will allow all aspects of the project to be considered together. It will go first to the planning commission for a recommendation, and then to city council for final action if the council approves, excuse me, approves the concurrent processing tonight. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Questions for staff? Hearing done, we have no speaker cards on this item. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that we allow the concurrent processing for the lot at 2080 East Tilcrest Drive.
All right, Mr. Adams moves 10A. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 11, we have no items. Item 12 is council issues and recommendations, follow-up meetings from conferences. Mr. Price, you're going to report on the League of Cities Public Safety Meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the Public Safety Committee meeting in Sacramento this past Friday. There, there were, there was a presentation from Don Filazato, who's a deputy district attorney from Los Angeles County. It was more or less a budget update, talking about realignment, some of the monies that are allocated in this year's budget that will hopefully improve cities and counties' ability to manage some of the prisoners that are being released from their state penal institutions and are being funneled back to our community. So that was a bit of good news. Actually, it was kind of interesting that during the budget discussions at the meeting, they were having a hard time delivering them, simply because they're not used to talking about good news with respect to the budget. So the folks from the league were really marveling. That was an attempt at humor there, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Anyway, from that, there were a number of bills that were discussed, and they're listed in here. I think of significant note was one, SB 1193, that deals with controlled substances and the destruction of cannabis, heretofore any large seizure of cannabis. And we do have some in the Ventura County area where they'll find a wild grow and they can uproot, you know, thousands of pounds. And it's been incumbent upon law enforcement to maintain custody of that through the court process, and now they have, were able to destroy that and maintain just a representative sample. So it's important that, you know, that we not have to build facilities to maintain illicit drugs. We also talked about child abuse and neglect reporting, discussed human trafficking and material witnesses, and that those sorts of hearings can be conducted in a deposition setting as opposed to, in some cases, as opposed to in court. And then there was some discussion about the prohibited armed persons file, and there's an assembly bill that would bring together two different databases that prior to this were not. And this actually, I think, was, while it does not, it does not get us to where we need to be with the armed prohibited possessors file, it does get us a little closer. Right now, the people who are in that file go back to 1996. With the passage of this assembly bill, it will update those files to, all the way back to 1991, and clearly, we need to go a little bit further than that as well. And then we did have some discussions about the transportation network companies, and that's a big discussion that's going on, and not so much here, but other larger cities with respect to the Lyft and Sidecar and the Uber, ride-share services, as they're calling themselves. But interesting, good, informative meeting, and I'll submit it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. If there's no objection, that'll be received and filed. We'll move to Item 13. Mr. Mitnick, city manager, follow-up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up from items on tonight's agenda. In a moment, I'll talk about the July 8th city council meeting, that's our next, the city council's next meeting. I'd be remiss if I didn't make a, do a reminder and make a plug for July 4th. So city offices will be closed on July 4th, and there are a lot of really fun, interesting, and cool things to do for families in the Cano Valley all day long. CRPD will be putting on a lot of programs, as well as the city, and you can get that information on both the city and CRPD's website. And then, of course, it culminates with the July 4th fireworks from, Fireworks Hill, on, at 9:00 PM. And there's many different viewing vantage points for that, as well as a number of private companies such as Mace Rich, the owners of the Oaks Mall, and the Jams Marketplace and so on, they'll have public viewing areas. So information on that is on the city's website. At the next council meeting, at this point in time for July 8th, it looks like we have one public hearing that we know of, and this is the annual state supplemental police grant, Law Enforcement Services Fund grant. And the youth commission will give its annual report to the city council. And the city's 2014 overlay, or street overlay and resurfacing program, the bid award for that will come to city council as a department report, and we might have an open space parcel acquisition that comes to council, a small parcel. And then, of course, we'll have the, I think, the third city council visioning 2064 status update report, or fourth, excuse me, I stand corrected, July 4th, 4th. That's right, keep the jokes with you. So that's the city manager's follow-up. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mitnick. We do have a closed session item, and Ms. Noonan will adjourn us into closed session. There will not be an announcement afterwards.
Conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, she Engineering and Construction versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number BC 492100, LA County Superior Court pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9A. And as the mayor indicated, it's not likely I'll have anything to report.
All right, and there is no adjournment for this evening, and on behalf of the council, we want to wish everybody in our community a safe and happy 4th of July, and we will stand adjourned until our regularly meeting on July 8th, 2014. Have a great week.